Sue, if you do the...
Here.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Here. All right. Approval or amendments to the agenda? I have one amendment. At the end, right before the adjournment, we'll do an election of a secretary. Okay?
Okay.
Who did that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, anything else?
I think we had to approve the May meeting.
Yep, you got to approve the May.
No, Dennis is gone. It was just us two.
Yep. Is there any?
No, I think we're already at the May, because last time was June.
Okay.
It looked like we needed to do May's meeting minutes.
Yeah, there wasn't enough people.
Oh, okay.
Is it on here?
It's supposed to be on the motion as well.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we're going to approve the minutes, just you and I?
For May?
For May.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the May minutes.
And we are the majority right now because
That's right.
The other two. All right. All in favor?
Do you have some board?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Technical stuff. All right, so approval for the, or approval or amendments to this agenda now. We did one. We all set for today's meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, approval for minutes of June 21st meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for June 21st, 2023.
Second.
Sue, was she there?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. All in favor, the three of us? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Minutes passed. Okay, here we go. The Clayton Township Zoning Board of Appeals, our ZBA primarily addresses practical difficulty based on lot size, location, shape, or contour, and/or location of existing buildings. We are guided by Section 27.05 of Ordinance Number 126. There are five members on the ZBA, all of whom are present tonight. At least three members must vote affirmatively for a motion to grant a variance. Three members constitute a quorum. Each appeal before the ZBA will have a public hearing, at which time the applicant will first present his or her case, and a public comment regarding that issue will follow. During this time, members of the board may ask questions of clarification. If a particular point gets belated, the chairperson has the right to limit comments. When the public hearing is closed, the board will move on to deliberation of the particular variance request. If the applicant should disagree with the board's decision, here she has the right to take it to Circuit Court within 30 days of the decision. When your appeal hearing is concluded, you are welcome to leave or stay as you wish. Okay. So, we'll go right into new business. JZBA 2023-009 at 6502 Marina Drive. I've been told that anyone that speaks tonight must stand up in front of the podium and speak into the microphone. Come on up.
Good evening. Eric Hyder, 44045 Grasset, representing the owner. I'm the architect of the project. The project is a non-conformity structure of an existing detached garage in the front. What we want to do is kind of expand the existing detached garage and attach it to the house. The front of the garage is kind of encroaching on it now, since we're attaching it a four-foot front yard setback. So, we're asking kind of for a front yard setback on a non-conformity of the existing structure. It's an existing one-car detached garage, and so we want to attach it and to gain some extra space. So, it's attached to the house, so now the owner can actually kind of pull into a two-car garage and then kind of go into the house and create like a new foyer area. So, by doing that, we're asking for a front yard setback. And the house is kind of non-conforming of the lot size itself and then the garage itself. So, we're not encroaching and increasing the existing non-conformity of the existing garage. So, we kind of want to use the existing garage and just kind of, you know, expand it and attach it to the house.
Okay. Stay right there for one second.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Is there anyone wish to? I'm going to open a public comment. Anyone wish to speak in regards to Marina Drive case? I'm going to close public comment. I just got to double check to see if we got any letters. Sometimes they get buried in our stuff. There's no code on here that we had any. Am I out of order? I don't see any letters. Okay, I don't see any letters. All right, so is the house non-conforming or is the garage, detached garage right now, non-conforming?
From what Gary says, I think it's both. Gary is, was it the property and the house non-conforming?
Yeah, there's some not.
Yeah. The houses, I believe, in one respect, the house is not, I believe, 55 feet from the back property. So, the house, the existing house, is non-conforming. And I believe the garage itself is non-conforming of the existing.
So, you're just putting a breezeway between the two?
Well, even if it's a breezeway, if we're attaching it, it still would be a non-conforming structure. So, it's the same application if we attach the garage with a breezeway or, you know, just expanding the garage to the house. So, we kind of want to make the garage kind of a usable garage for us to park into, because with the property since being 11 feet, we don't have a lot to actually park in front of the garage.
I guess what I meant to say, you're just coming to the house. You're not, you're not going out towards the sides. You're not making anything big.
No, no, that's why we're not, that's right. We're not, that's why we're not increasing the non-conformity. We're just going even with it.
Okay.
What is the garage, the two-foot, two-foot variance, and the house is the 11-foot or four-foot?
Four-foot is the expansion to connect to the, to the original house, because the original garage is four-foot from the house. So, we want to add that four-foot so it connects to the house, so to make the garage larger.
Did you attach any building plans to the application? Or do you have any?
Yes, you should have a site plan, a floor plan, and elevation.
Nope. We don't have it. It was back in the office.
That's what I was asking. I don't have it. That's right.
I have the copy. There's...
So, front side and back are going to remain the same. You're just asking for that connection between the garage and the house.
That is correct. If, I have my copy, if you want to kind of see what we're doing.
Is this a new purchase for you?
I'm sorry. No, I'm the architect.
You're the architect, okay.
Representing the owner.
Okay. Is it a new purchase for the owner?
Yeah, so here's the original garage here. So, we're attaching it four-foot here. So, now the garage is attached to the house, so we can kind of get into the house and creating a new foyer, because there's no front door. It kind of goes into a utility room. So, by attaching it here, I'm creating a new foyer.
So, here we go here.
You know, front door, so that now there's kind of curb appeal to the house.
Okay, got you. So, here's the new front door.
Yes.
It doesn't, okay.
Yeah, so it's not, I'm not encroaching on the existing non-conformity.
Okay.
Well, sure, a site plan.
So, so here's, like I mentioned, here's the existing garage. I'm just going across here and making, attaching this to create the garage. And then this portion is the new front door to create the curb appeal with the foyer. So, now it's attached so I can get into the house. Because the original door is here. That kind of leads to the utility room. It needs to wash and dryer, bathroom, and furnace, and water tank, so.
So, your variance, what makes it non-conforming? It's about four-foot, there's no parking in front.
Yeah, because it's 15 feet for a front yard setback. I only have 11 of the existing one. So, even if I go back four feet, I'm not gaining anything. So, I'm just kind of trying to take the existing.
So, at this point, there's parking here.
Inside.
But no, no, but this is the new three-car garage where you're building out. But right now, you could park outside of a garage.
No, it's, well, no, because this is grass. So, they have to park on the existing gravel, which is not their property, because their property is right here. So, it's because it's on the curb. This is just gravel, so they kind of have to park here, which is really not their property. So, technically, their property is only 11 feet. So, at least now with this, they can actually kind of go into and park into the garage.
So, they've been parked, kind of parking here, yeah. And then, so you've got the three feet here, you've got the 11 feet here, which is...
And that's why I'm not encroaching on the non-conforming.
That's right. You're not, you're not making it worse.
No.
And you're going back, you're going back within the building footprint.
Yeah.
Kind of so to speak.
Yeah, because it's on a crawl space. There's, there's no storage. You know, he has a boat well. It's all decked. There, I mean, there's nothing to put stuff in. Of course, we can do a set can, sort of access, two cars to store this for all the other stuff. And creating now a foyer, because now we have a porch foyer coming into here.
17 here. You're reducing it down over here to 13 right here. So, you're making it worse a little bit right there, all right? So, 13 would be, and then 11. And any distances, so you've got the existing structure. Any distances given there?
I think it's like 15 to the house. This is, this is a brand new house, too.
So, you've got the, you've got this dimension here. So, you're going to be about five to six feet from the existing garage.
Yeah, so it's already there.
It's already there.
Yeah, basically six feet from the existing garage. That's detached. But he has to kind of trail one here to get to his house. So, that's why at least now if you go into here, you can actually get a foyer in the front.
All right. That clears it up. I don't want to be a drawing hog here.
Lot better.
Thank you. I did submit that with my application, so I'm surprised it wasn't in the packet.
Yeah, I didn't see that one over there. I should have looked at all the prints.
Yeah.
Hold that all messed up.
You can, you can keep that. That's...
All right, I'm going to ask Gary to step up. If you want to step down for a second. Gary, could you come up for a second? Can you come over here for one second, Gary? This is the plan that you're seeing? Is this what you're...
Yes.
You're seeing, there's no, it's nothing expanding there. I mean, it's just attaching to and on.
Okay, so what, what makes this? I can do it if you might.
Yeah, I would like that. But I just want to make sure this is what you're seeing. Okay.
Okay, so what, what really makes this a non-conformity as far as this garage is concerned? Couple different things. One is, keep in mind that it's an R2, so our front yard setback is 15 feet. This is one of those streets that have an excessive right-of-way for the street. And the street doesn't even come near the property line. And really, there's quite a bit of, of area between their actual property line and the street itself. The other thing on this is that a detached garage, your, your side yard setback is three feet. Once you attach it, then we're, we're looking at it to be five feet away. So, the non-conformity comes into play because we're not able to have, because he wants to utilize the same garage. Not able to move it over or, you know, down that path. The easiest path would be a two-foot variance for a garage that's been sitting there for a long time anyways. But it's not something that I can approve at my level based on, you know, it doesn't meet the five-yard setback once we attach it. So, the four-foot up in front, the 11-foot that they'll have, it is what it is right now. It's just when we're looking to expand upon this, we've got to call all these things out. But pointing out that this property has, you know, this excessive street right-of-way that, you know, will never be utilized and nothing will ever be expanded in that regard. And it's well within the property boundaries as it is. It's just missing that mark by four-foot, which is probably missed that mark since the day that garage was built. And I couldn't tell you when it was built. But, you know, it's a typical waterfront property where the garages are forward of the house. And so, this is where this plays out.
Thank you. You guys have any questions for Gary? Any clarification?
So, the architect indicated that it's a newer home. How long ago? Do you know how much?
No, the, the house to the east is a newer home.
Okay.
Not our house, no.
Okay.
Our house has been there for quite a long time.
Okay.
I'm saying, I'm sorry, to clarify, the next-door neighbor is in New York.
That makes more sense to me now. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Since we don't have it in our package for the drawing, the motion, maybe we should include a reference on the drawing, so we know what we're approving, because there could be, we could prove it, and it may not be the same set of...
That's why I asked Gary if it was. This is the plan, yeah.
Yeah, there was a full set of architectural plans submitted to Gary. That's why he kind of denied it, so it's the exact same drawing, so he can verify that. So...
You know, we have, you know, black magic marker. I mean, I can initial this set to where Gary gets to see this set.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know?
As long as it's, there's no confusion, because drawings get revised and changed and around, and there's no reference on the, on the package.
Again, that's why I brought Gary up, because I'm like, hey, you know, I don't want to get the sleight of hand here.
We can just say the date, if there's a date on it.
Yeah, the date on my cover sheet should be the exact same date that was submitted to Gary.
Oh, yeah. Black magic marker, my signature.
Yeah.
Bring this to Gary, just to verify.
Yes, absolutely. No problem.
You know what I mean? So, is that in form of a motion?
No, I didn't say motion. I was just getting clarification.
I know, but we got three more.
Clarification.
Any other questions?
You put on, well, I don't know if you put it on the application, but it says the lot is non-conforming. Is it the building, the lot, or the garage? Or is it all three?
I believe it's all three. Because the house is not 55 feet from the rear yard setback. So, it's, the existing house is encroaching on the rear yard. So, that's non-conforming. The garage is non-conforming, and I, so, and I believe the, kind of the lot size itself would be non-conforming.
Okay.
So, it's not a build of a lot? You're saying the, the frontage and the...
I think we probably have to get some variances if it was a vacant lot.
Okay.
To build.
Are there any specific characteristics of the lot that make it hard to build? Like exceptional, anything?
I think just existing non-conformity of the existing structure. I think that's the practical difficulty, since, since it's existing non-conforming, I would have to be in here anyway, because it's non-conforming. So, I have, I would have to have conformed. So, I would have to probably be here anyway. So, I think it's just existing non-conformity.
Okay.
Okay.
Got a motion?
Okay.
Or clarification, since I'm relatively new here. Second meeting. Can you just reference the applicant's items on here rather than having to reiterate everything that they've written down on this for their reasons for the variance? Can we just put, as per the applicant's? Or do you have to read it into the record?
He could just read them.
If you read them, it helps.
Okay, I don't know what the procedure.
Yeah.
Just being, I guess, lazy.
It is, it is a quick way. We have done it many times that way, yes. But if there's the highlights that you, you know, would like to, you know...
Well, he's got an architect involved that's been writing it, so.
Right.
And that looks like architect's writing there, so.
Yes, probably, if it's all capital letters. That would be neat.
Eight blocks, perfect. Something I never accomplished.
I think reading it out...
I think you'll be safe on this one, Joe. Chris.
Well, I move that we approve JZBA 2023-009 6502 Marina. The, for the following reasons. The practical difficulty is the existing non-conforming lot and existing location of house and detached garage. To install a new garage, unique situation, existing house is not conforming to lot conditions and setbacks, not self-created. Existing detached garage will not be expanded and attached to house with existing garage encroachment at front yard setback. Substantial justice, existing lots in vicinity of house have similar situations and non-conformities and lot constraints. Not contrary to the ordinance, the new addition would be in line with the neighborhood lot and would not interfere with views and surrounding houses and privacy.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and second. Rule call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Here.
Do you want to keep that brief file? It's a copy. I'll throw it away, so if you want to...
Yeah, I'll keep it. Thank you. Get it?
Yeah.
As written for you. You can write, motion as, as written. Stated.
Right here? Okay.
Stated as drawn. I have a lot more technical. If it gets denied, then we'll be right on point. All right. Okay, as that's getting passed. All right, we're going to move on to the next item. JZBA 2023-010 at 452 Russell Island. Representative, please come up. State your name and address, please.
Sharon Whitmire, 3426 Woodfield, East China.
Okay.
Yes.
And what brings you?
Did you get the packet that I submitted?
Yes, we did.
22 pages? Okay. So, what would you like me to say? It's regarding the accessory building without a primary structure and a principal building. We had gone through this with the previous building department. We had, we had asked if we needed a permit or anything and explained that we owned the property at 457 for 70 years and 452 for about 40 years. So, we always thought of them as one lot. And so, we had built an additional lot on the front lot, and when we addressed the existing building department at the time, because we needed storage for outdoor furniture and boating supplies and things. So, that's when we built the structure. And we thought everything was fine until we got the letter from Gary Burl, what, a month ago, month and a half ago?
Did anything happen in between that?
When?
Did you sell anything or...
Oh, yeah. We sold the property over the winter in January. The main property with our cottage on it. But the shed was already in place. So, our intent is to build a cottage on the waterfront lot, but we financially can't do that right now because we're under a land contract. And we need the funds from that. And the building environment is not kind right now with building supplies and the cost. And it's, for example, we had to pay $15,000 for a thousand-square-foot cottage to get a new roof on it, which is kind of crazy, you know, on our, on our cottage. So, we're just, we were just kind of stunned when we received the letter, because we thought we had done everything. The way things are on Russell Island for like 100 years, there are cottages. And then on a totally separate lot, there are boathouses or accessory buildings, which aren't joined as one lot. And I sent you examples of three existing. One is four lots away from us. And, excuse me, a little dry.
So, right now, you don't have a primary structure on Russell Island?
No, we just sold it a couple. We're under contract. Really, technically, we're under land contract. And so, we are part owners on the property, because they haven't paid off the contract yet, and we're funding it. So, we have the cottage at 457. And right across the road, like 50 feet away, is the shed.
And then you, eventually, if the land contract gets paid off, you would want to build another cottage?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I...
Something maintenance-free. It's like, and something that's, you know, easy to deal with. It's just very difficult getting anything done on the island. And, you know, with the weather and the water levels and, you know, can you bring? There's no cars on the island. The road is, you know, maybe six feet wide in parts. So it's just very challenging.
Is there any way that you could spend the night in that shed? Would you spend the night in that shed?
Trick question?
It's a trick question. It's a total trick question.
Yeah, water, gas, I think, yeah.
It's a shed. It's got, it's very well enclosed. And it's got a lot of stuff that we had to transfer when we sold the cottage. It was an unusual situation. We had some people that were familiar with the island. They were interested in our cottage. And we were interested in selling. And we wanted to build something on the waterfront eventually. We just can't do it right now. So it was just timing.
Do you have a timeframe possibly?
Two to three years. We have to do it before. We're too old to do anything, so. It's.
But these were two separate lots, right?
Yeah.
So.
There have always been two separate lots.
They already knew with the cottage.
We never.
The cottage was on one lot. The other lot was vacant, but somebody put a garage, a shed on it. So you knew you were not conforming at that time.
Absolutely did not know we were not conforming at that time. We had checked with the building department. We explained the situation that we owned the cottage. We wanted to build on the lot on the waterfront.
But there were two separate lots.
They've always been two separate lots.
They've never been combined.
No.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Do you own the lot that this shed is on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So she doesn't own the house anymore. She isn't interested in the land contract.
It's always, the two lots weren't combined.
Right.
At the time, you had the cottage and put the shed on it. So you always heard this whenever the ordinance says the house is okay, but then you put a shed on a lot that was a separate lot, which could not have a shed.
Right, and I gave examples of existing situations on the island.
That's not justification.
Pardon me?
That's not justification.
Well, we weren't aware of it. And we had both checked. My brother and myself had both checked with the building department at the time. And we said, do we need a permit or anything to do this?
When you sold the lot, when you sold the cottage, this ordinance takes place.
Makes it nonconformal.
Well, we weren't aware of that.
When did you put the shed in?
It took about four years.
About when? About how long ago?
About 2015.
And the shed lot abuts to the house that you sold?
It wouldn't. No, it's on the other side of the road.
Across the road?
Yeah.
But within reason?
Yeah, it's within reason.
And those have been decommissioned by the county a long time ago.
Yeah, it's a golf cart road, right?
But we're still within, I believe, the setbacks that were laid out for the lot size. It's not like it's close to the road. It's based from where the actual lot plat is actually at, so.
Do we know when that ordinance went into effect?
Well, when they sold the house.
Well, no, but when they went, having an accessory building on a lot, it wouldn't have mattered because they were across the street because it wasn't attached. It didn't. Regardless of when they sold the house, it's still a separate piece of property.
We can ask Gary.
Gary, maybe. So I think it's a relatively recent.
And if there's no power, there's no water or anything in that shed. It's just a shed. It's full of tools and a mower, valve cart.
Was there a permit, do you know, that was obtained at that point?
As I said, we had checked with the building department and they didn't require a permit.
So you called and they said they didn't require a permit at that?
Right.
At that time in 2015?
Right.
Was the ordinance in place back then?
Probably wasn't specified that it was on a separate lot. You know, they do, they did have a dwelling at the time, so.
But it would have been, been like the ones, like on Anchor Bay Drive, all the ones that are separate, there's two properties.
Right.
I mean, if it's.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to open up, stay there for one second. I do have quite a bit of letters. I'm going to open up public comment. Anyone that wishes to speak on the Russell Island. You guys are all here for Anchor Bay? Okay. All right, we do have some letters. We just got to find them.
Yeah, we went to all the neighboring lots.
300 feet.
I don't see any.
The owners that we could reach at the time, eight of 11.
Did you find anyone that objected to it?
No.
Did you say eight out of 11? Eight out of 11, okay.
That we have signed documentation or text or, you know, an email.
So all these are the same letters? I just can read the name, read one letter and just read the names? Would that suffice you? Because that's what I'm seeing right here. All right, so. Chris, I don't know who. Email is to Chris.
Oh, Chris Billowitz, my brother. He received an email from.
All right.
Bud.
So Daniel Grattan.
Daniel Grattan.
Grattan, sorry. At 433 Russell Island does not oppose to it.
He owns two lots also. He owns one on the same side as our cottage and one on the waterfront.
Okay. Basically, this is the letter in general. It says to the Clay Township zoning board. We do not have any objections to the shed, which is currently on parcel. Sincerely. It's got to be a doctor. Nope, Vincent. It isn't, no.
Vincent B. something.
Ollert?
Ollert.
Ollert?
Yeah. Not a doctor.
Vincent, what's his last name?
Ollert, O-H-L-E-R-T.
What is his last name?
That is Bernard Ollert.
Oh, that's the.
Ollert Vincent B.
That's Bernard.
Bernard, okay, just a B. All right, he lives at 463 Russell Island. Russell Drive. And this one is from, oh my God, I got to make these guys print these from now on. Bernard Ollert, is that the same guy?
Same family, they have lots right now.
He's at 15.
Truro Drive.
Truro Drive, that's right. Burton Darren and Kerry.
They were right next to 457. Next to our, the cottage that we had.
Melanie Martin. Martinson?
I don't get it.
Woodcock.
Woodcock.
Yeah, it used to be.
They're behind her. They're behind.
And they're at 158.
Toward the beach.
Andrea Fignar.
Fignar, yes.
How do you say that?
Fignar.
Fignar, that's close, right? 428.
Yeah, they're just down.
Joseph and Joseph Appleby and Amy Dozer.
Those are the people that are at our cottage, 457. They're under contract.
That bought yours?
457.
And they're at 457? Sharon Whitmore?
That'd be me, huh?
Says from, hang on. From Chris, from owner. Oh, it's a text from Ray Fowler, sorry. I am the owner of lots. He's got one, two. I have no problem with the shed on the lot. Should approve the variance. Raymond Fowler.
Maybe he's just down the street. He's got a vacant lot.
I could show you on a map. I can close that in the packet.
This one?
If you'd like to see that.
Yeah, if you want to explain it to me real quick.
Is there alerts? An alert here. Okay, this is, I think, 457 right here. The Truro Drive.
Yep.
Kind of overlay. This is the lot in question.
Okay.
With the shed. This is Fignar here.
Okay.
This is.
Where's your, where's the cottage at that you sold?
Right here.
Right here?
Yeah.
And this is the waterfront property? This is where you're going to build with the shed that's on it?
Yes.
Is that hope?
Yes.
With the timeframe?
Was there two separate tax bills, though?
Yes.
Yeah, so it wasn't a lot, three lots on one, but now it was, the cottage had a lot and a tax on the other, vacant property.
Yeah, they were just two.
So there's always a vacant property. So shed on a vacant property.
When we, but no one mentioned it when we talked.
I got you. All right, you guys, we'll go back to the microphone. When he asks you a question, I'm sorry. Actually, I'm going to pull up Gary real quick.
What?
I'm going to pull Gary, our billing official, please. Gary, they said two to three years they're going to build a structure or would wish to build a structure. It's nonlivable. You've seen it, is it nonlivable, it's not going to be.
Yeah, the shed itself, yeah, no, it's not something they could live in.
I mean, no electricity, no water to it. It's, you know.
And do keep in mind, we do have provisions in our ordinance that says that you can have a shed or a garage prior to construction, you know, to secure tools and materials. So if you wanted to widen that box and say, you know, that this is a possibility, that this is preempting the build to allow it to stand at least temporarily and put a timeframe on it of two or three years that says that if it's not, we don't have plans for a new build by then, then, you know, it would have to be removed. But that's your call. But we do have provisions in the ordinance that would allow for building accessory structures.
With no bond or anything? I mean, we're not going to.
Right.
And just in defense of maybe the old builder official, because that, it was a separate lot. They did have a house. It is adjoining. It appears to be adjoining properties to where it goes hand in hand. I mean, the shed's got a better, and I can't say better, but it looks like waterfront property, which everyone would assume that would be a better piece of land that you're going to futurely build on, if that's a word. I just wanted to make sure you saw it and you didn't think it was, you know, dialed up cottage to where we're approving someone, or maybe possibly approving a house.
And you can always stipulate, you can always stipulate, you know. But, yeah, I don't see this as being anything more than.
But I also want to open up a can of worms on Russell Island that everyone owns one lot that we're going to be able to get sheds at all the time.
And that's, that's why.
They did sell a house that this shed was being used for. They still own that house technically according to the court of law because it's not paid in full, it's a land contract. Not saying that that could go south, but land contracts are, you know, who knows?
I know, because I'm a broker. They own it. There's a deed to the property. They just have an interest in it because of the nonpayment.
Right.
So they do not own that property whatsoever. They're not responsible for taxes, insurance, or maintenance.
Who does not own it?
They don't own the property under land contract anymore. The property is.
But if it goes into default, they're going to get it back, right? It doesn't go to the bank.
Correct, that's why they have an interest.
They are the bank.
Okay, yes.
There's a deed, but it's not, it's held in escrow.
Correct.
So there's a deed. They gave up their rights and they held up. There's a title company who holds the deed.
I mean, hopefully that goes through, you know, I mean, gets paid off and then, you know, within two or three years, they can build something or remove the shed.
Do you have a balloon on that land contract? Or is it, is it a term contract? Do you have a balloon on that contract?
It's a balloon at the end of the term.
What's the term?
It's the interest only. It's one year.
Okay.
From January.
That's important. Okay, all right, that's good. Then you'll have the money.
Two to three years because we aren't planning anything until the deal is done. We can't afford to spend money we don't have, so.
I asked Gary a couple of questions. The, they said they put this up in 15, and I'm not an expert on the history of the ordinances here. Do you know if that would have been allowed without a building permit in 15, do you think? I'm not sure when you started.
You know, they did some revamping of 3.01 in 2016.
Right.
But it would be my guess that even prior to that, accessory structures would have required, you know, at least a zoning permit. But I don't know that for sure. I can check into that.
So you suspect that even at that point, that shed would not have been legal even then?
I would agree with that.
There's a lot of cases in the township. I mean, Anchor Bay Drive is a good example where the garage is on the one side, which would be a similar scenario.
Sort of, but a lot of those, when you bring up Anchor Bay Drive, a lot of those properties are joined to the waterfront properties.
Well, they are, well, they were platted. A lot of the street was front and back. There's two separate lots. Some people have combined them, some people haven't. Some people just have the garage, even though they live across the street.
Yeah.
So there is a lot of.
You know Anchor Bay Drive more than most.
Yeah, so in that scenario, I mean, those were put in, those garages were probably put in 50, whatever, how many plus years ago?
Right.
Was there, was there a complaint that was lodged on this while you investigated this? Yes, or just a general looking around?
You know, Clay Township, it is a part of Clay Township. And we do annual or biannual inspections of all of our islands, even the out islands out on the flats. And just to make sure that everyone's complying with.
So just a general inspection, not think that someone, neighbor didn't make a complaint on it and say, they've got this shed here and we don't like it or nothing like that?
Yes, nothing like that.
Just a general inspection of the area?
Right.
Okay. And it was probably, needed permits at that point. It was never allowed at that point when they, when it went in.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Gary.
But with that said, at the time that it was put in, though, they did have a house. It's not like they just have a vacant lot.
But not on that property.
Correct. Within the vicinity of a house that they owned. It's not just a vacant lot that someone's going to go tomorrow and purchase a vacant lot on Russell Island and then put a shed up. It's not, that's what's different.
Yeah, but once we've seen in this, this situation, they were just vacant lots.
I mean, they did sell the house. I mean, we paid Gary tons of money to go out there and make sure that everything's right.
I think I need.
Sorry for you guys. Go ahead.
So the, I'm sorry, I keep asking questions, yeah. Just got to make sure.
Yeah, we got to have a microphone.
And he can yell from his seat if he needs to.
So the home, or not the home, the lot that this shed is on, is there a land contract with respect?
No, no, we own that pre-entire.
That's owned outright?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the one they're going to build.
That's important.
The future house on.
Okay.
That's all I needed to know.
Go ahead.
If they got to pay off in a year, they're going to have the funds when they pay off in a year. So if we give them a timeframe to at least secure a permit? Because we know that in a year, if they don't default, they will have the funds in order to start the building. So if they can get a permit, which is good for a year, then impossibly in two years. Or do we make it 18 months and then a year after that?
I, it's been there for four years.
Right.
You know, the two to three years, nonlivable. And at that time, if it's past the three years or the two years, whichever, you know, you guys agree, I'd say it has to be removed or moved to a piece of property that has a house on it.
Yep.
Which is just as easy, you know. Monetary, I know it's going to cost you money regardless, however, but that doesn't, not part of our decision.
I don't think it's movable. And it would just be a total, you know.
How big is it?
Demo, pardon me?
How big is the shed?
It's 10 by 12.
12 by 16.
12 by 16.
When I was in the background, Gary, it wasn't livable. So that's one of the questions I asked at all.
That exception that Gary talked about, I'm trying to find it, I can't find it. But I think whatever motion, if we were to make one, should include that exception if that's what we're going under.
Is it affixed to the land with a rat wall or is it sitting on a slab?
Pardon me?
It was a pyramid block.
Okay, so you've got a rat wall?
No, it's a rat wall.
Underneath the ground? Or is it sitting on top of the ground?
On top of the ground.
Would Gary know which ordinance that is?
Gary, do you know what ordinance that is as far as being able to build an outstructure prior to a primary building?
I can have that to you in two minutes. I'll run back to my office.
Do you want this book right here?
This is it?
I got a warm seat, boy, you're right here. Samantha wants to have reference to that. There's all your ordinances right there. Is that what you, Chris?
Yes, exactly, it'd be nice to tag that on.
Yeah, that's what Sam just asked me, if we knew which one.
Because it's, you know, we're reviewing it now, but in three years, it'd be nice to make sure it's all kind of clear if someone's looking at it in three years.
So if someone's gonna make a motion on that, I mean, can we put the timeframe on that as well? And then, I'd like to see the nonlivable. I'd like to see the, you know. How about this, I'm more afraid of everybody coming in tomorrow.
Yeah, I know.
Full permits for a vacant lot over on Russell Island, right?
Exactly.
We know it's a unique situation, we know you can only get there by boat. It's a great island, I totally agree. It's just, we don't need to be bombarded with variances to have a shed on a vacant piece of property. Okay? If there is some there now and was before, blah blah, you know what I mean? No one's perfect, but not, if it is approved, you know, depending on what the motion's gonna go, I would like to avoid having an influx of permits pulled for a shed on a vacant piece of property on Russell Island without having a primary structure on it or within plans. Hopefully, we find this ordinance to build a primary.
But this doesn't, just because we approve this one, doesn't mean the next one has to be approved.
Hundred percent, but it slowly.
Sets a precedent.
It slowly starts.
If it's an exception to the ordinance, there's nothing for us to do. Because it's an exception, there's no variance to the ordinance.
We're not giving a variance, we're just.
Making sure that that exception exists.
But it's, would have to be applied for during the building process is what it's gonna say.
Okay.
I mean, we do it all the time. When you build a brand new house, someone builds a pole barn for it. Typically, we put a barn on it. Build a pole barn, use it for tools, you know, you gotta construct your house within one year.
Yeah.
And the barn is, you know, held in case you don't build the house to where they have enough money to tear down the house. Typically, it doesn't happen that way, but.
Sorry, Gary.
Sorry, Gary, you threw it out there. You're in the hot spot.
It's all marked up, it's got tags on it.
Oh, I know, mine is pretty basic. Yeah.
I'll start looking too.
I could tell you, you could go back in the files, I could tell you a couple houses that we did, that you could look into it. Is anyone else seeing anything else? I mean, while we're deliberating, we all have to speak out loud anyway, so. It's whoever's gonna make the motion that.
So to keep those people from coming to the township and asking for that permit, right? And a variance so that they can build. So if we give them a timeframe, we already know their payoff is in a year. So if they get paid off in a year and then we, within that year, or on mark year one, they go and get their building permit, then they're at least dedicated to moving forward with the construction. So I would, I would give them a year to get paid off.
Can't you put an extension on a land contract?
We don't want an extension, we want them cashed out so they can build the house.
I understand.
Yeah.
I totally agree with that.
Yeah.
But that's why I asked her a couple key questions at the beginning. She said two to three years without even having a land contract.
But this forces their hand to at least get the permit and, with intent.
You could put it in there, for sure.
But are we really even giving a variance? If it's allowed in the ordinance? We're really not, we're not giving a variance. We're just giving them approval.
You know, you don't have to, I guess, find it. Is that something that is normal practice? Is that would be that in the book, that you would allow the shed to be prior to? Is there a timeframe on that shed? Before permits or?
It does have timeframes.
Okay.
You could, could set your own, really, at this point. Just for this temporary situation. But there is, and, you know, it goes to, you know, 180 days. And then you can expand upon that another 180 days. And then if nothing has been started since then, then it has to be removed within 60 days of, 60 days from the day that everything is expired. Where we have to come back down, but, but yeah.
That's okay.
So just expanding, what we're looking at doing is expanding the timeframe. Would we need a variance for expanding the timeframe, or just?
Well, I think you would. I mean, your zoning book has that specified. So if you wanna make an exception to that.
So the variance. So the variance would be on that specific ordinance, allowing a longer timeframe for this specific condition?
I would say.
Is that right, am I looking at it right?
Okay, that would be good.
But can't they just go to the, and get a permit and say, we're gonna start building in two to three years and start paying the?
So he's saying 180, right?
No, yeah.
Instead of us granting something.
180 days. You're allowed to go ahead and extend that. But the whole idea of that is if something goes dormant or quits forward motion, then you have, you know, that leverage of timeframe to then have the situation limited. So either by the court of law or local.
Well, we'd have to have plans and stuff before we even got a permit, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So, it's very difficult to find contractors for anything right now. And to find contractors that would build on that land, on that island, is extremely difficult, so it's gonna take, it's not like I can just go, and they can only build certain times of the year. They can't build year round out there. So we'd need probably, you know, like you mentioned, the two to three years at least, I would think, because just finding someone to even start doing a general contractor, whatever, get someone to commit. It took us almost two years just to get a guy to do the rough.
Should we table this? Let Gary do the research? And then, you're obviously in no rush to have a decision.
I would like to.
The decision you made in three years would be perfect for you.
Yeah.
But if we table it and just, Gary can.
Gary, you're on that, so you're not on the hot seat? Table this, he doesn't even have to come to the next meeting, we approve it or not.
He'll know.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not gonna open up a comment.
There wouldn't be any additional fees for the people. Is that correct, am I thinking, if they had to come back?
Yeah, if they had to come back.
No, there wouldn't be, yeah, there wouldn't be any additional.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure we'd have enough time.
Yeah, and I think we need that specific provision in the ordinance, so.
Include that, and then I can pull out this ordinance, and this is.
Do you, do you think it's that 180 days? I mean, they're not, they're not willing to do that. And, I mean, they're not ready to do that in 180 days. So that ordinance, we're gonna have to come up with a.
So, straight up, I think, you know, he would.
One year, he goes and inspected again?
If at least on a temporary basis, still requires a permit for it to be there and meet that criteria, but.
So let's do that. We'll require them to pull a building permit. They have one year, one year. With the land contract, we'll see. They have one year to give Gary an update. And up to, just say, a final timeframe, three years. Let's just say, within three years, if nothing's happened, no building permit, nothing's happened, it's gotta go. Period.
So you're saying to pull a permit now?
They have to pull a permit now, right?
They would, they'd have to have drawings and all.
Well, that way we get our tax money, because they got a permit on it. You know what I mean? And the shed's at least $2 or $3 million.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they're not, put the drawings all together, that's.
Yeah.
No, a permit for the shed. That's existing right now.
Permit just for the shed.
Just the shed, only permit for the shed that's on the lot now.
Okay.
Okay, make that 100% back to legal.
Gotcha.
Okay, that way, you know, we can get our tax dollars on that shed.
Okay.
In a sense. Give them a timeframe, I don't, I can't make a motion, so I'm just giving ideas. Give a timeframe that, hey, within this timeframe, you gotta pull building permit for a primary structure. However long it takes, but within three years, no more than three years, if the house permit isn't pulled, the structure, the existing shed must go. Which is probably just either, like you said, demoed or at that time.
I could see 18 months working, because if they get it paid off in a year, then they'll have the money to be able to get.
I'll never tell you what to say.
Okay.
I'm just giving you ideas. You can say whatever you want, we vote on yes or no. You know what I mean? But again, a timeframe, and that way, if we can reference this ordinance.
I'm gonna make a motion. It's not gonna be a popular one, but, motion to table this until next meeting, so we can get our ducks in a row and figure out what we're going to do.
Wait, wait. I'm sorry, you're gonna table this?
For another month.
I'm making a motion. It doesn't necessarily mean that that's the decision.
We still have to vote on that motion.
Yeah.
Right.
They still have to vote. So, motion to table this until the next meeting, August 2023.
I second the motion.
So we have a motion to table it, and a second. Let's have a roll call, please.
Yes.
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 No. Okay, we're gonna table it till next meeting. We'll get a little bit more data and go from there.
What does that mean to us, though? I mean.
You're safe for another month.
And then, how do we get notified what we have to do?
And the next meeting, you won't have to do anything. We're gonna, hopefully at that time, Gary, will have enough time to find the ordinance that we're trying to reference in part of a motion. And then we'll come up with, I'm sure, some kind of timeframe, depending on what this ordinance says. Or against your shed. But for right now, it is, there will be no public comment on the next one. It'll just be what the motion's gonna be.
Approved or denied.
Okay.
You do or don't have to come, you know what I mean? I always say, do come, in case we have any questions, of course, but. Sorry for the inconvenience, but without knowing a variance or even if that will help us determine our decision, it'd be nice. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Thank you. All right, so, Gary, you're good.
Sorry.
Yeah, I wouldn't even know where to begin to look in the middle, as everybody is staring at me.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, so we're gonna open up Jay-ZBA 2023-11 at 8360 Anchor Bay Drive. The representative, come up. You state your name and address. Perfect. Okay.
My name's Lirito, this is my husband, Dino Ravine. We're at 8360 Anchor Bay Drive. Do you want me to start, or?
Yep.
Okay. So we're asking for a variance for a new home that we're gonna put up on the property. We've been homeowners to the existing cottage since 2017, and we decided to move out there permanently, and so we have plans for blueprints. We submitted, I mean, plans for a building permit. When that was submitted, we got a phone call that said we were in violation of a supplemental setback ordinance that we weren't aware of when we got the, you know, we did the architect, the site plan, the survey. And then when we submitted it, we found out about this ordinance in 2019 that said we were in violation of the supplemental setback. A letter went out, which is why we have this great turnout, stating that we were in violation by so many feet, 27 feet and 15 feet. And those numbers are very inaccurate. We had a good conversation with Gary about this in terms of where those numbers came from. And so this new plot plan shows a better representation of the homes that are alongside us, not just the one home where the original measurements were taken from. So the 27 feet was taken from lot 90. We are lot 91, you'll see outlined in green on your blueprints. And lot 92 is to the south of us. So if you're facing the water, it's on the left. And the measurements of 27 and 15 were taken from that house, which itself is kind of an outlier, because it's set way far back and closer to the road. So Gary said, all right, get a new plot so that we can look at the house on lot 93, which is two homes over to the left, to the south. And that's where that blue trajectory line shows. Our home in the middle, and then where that goes, and then further up the road, two homes to the right also. So, what wasn't taken into consideration, though, is our current house is already almost 16 feet in front of the house to the south of us. So we're already within that 27-foot setback by almost 16 feet. So the true variance that we're asking for, you'll see in that green box is our current house with the slash marks, and then there's a measurement of 11.84. So what we're asking is that, from where our current house is, it's 11 feet, 11 and a half feet or so past that, not 25 feet or 27 feet past our current house, which is, was misleading to a lot of people. We've had people on our property come with their tape measures and measure, and I have them on camera, talking about, you know, we should unplug their camera and measuring, like where the home is gonna be, talking about it being past our patio, which it's not. Like, our patio is 17 feet, and the home is gonna be in the, almost past the middle of the patio, if that helps anybody that was out last night on our property.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on.
So, so there was confusion created by the letter that was sent out. And people are under the impression that our home is gonna be 27 feet past where it currently is. And that's just not the case. And when you look at the plot plan, it's 11.84 feet. And when you, and then this, the plot that you have.
So you're already 16 feet past the house?
Yes.
And then you're still, you wanna go 11 feet?
Yes.
Okay.
And that was created because of the road setback. When our architect measured everything, it was from a foot or so off the road, but there's apparently a seven-foot or so easement from the road to where our property actually starts. And that added to the four feet we originally thought we were gonna be, and now that's why we're at 11 and a half feet. But if you look at the plot and the homes that are on the plot plan, you'll see that we're actually in line with the home two, homes to the right.
Who drew the blue line?
It's, it's, it was drawn from the plot plan. I just highlighted it in yellow. You can look under there and see the original dash marks.
So this is from your architect?
Yeah, it's from the survey company. This is all from Fountain View Property Management. They did the plot plan. They revised it and looked at the other homes on the property, because when you do that, you get a better understanding of where the other homes are relative to our home. And the proposed home is actually gonna be in line And the proposed home is actually gonna be in line with the home on lot 88. And then as you go even further north on the property, the homes that are past that house will never even see where the new house is because the home on lot 88 and 87 obstructs their view, like they can't even see it. So we're here to ask for that variance.
Which is exactly how many feet now, 11?
11.84.
Thank you.
From our existing house, and that's what that showed. But like I said, and Gary can probably speak to the meeting that we had because when we got the letter, we were like, oh, my gosh, what are these numbers? Where did they come from? So we immediately made an appointment with Gary. He explained where he took it from and then said, okay, I'll consider the home on lot 93 and use that as a reference point instead of lot 92, 92.
So, so the green is your home?
It's the proposed home, and then the existing home is the box inside of it. I can show you. So this is the proposed home, and then this is the current home. And you'll see from here to where the proposed home is 11.84. And here, this is our current home. And line here, here, and this is the proposed home. Kind of follows the, and the lot is unique, and we're asking because of the properties of the lot, there's a bed you can see in these.
I get in trouble because I can't hear you.
Sorry.
I can't record it.
Okay. Okay.
So. Chris is at your.
If you turn off the wifi, it won't make that noise.
It's getting interference. So the architect drew these projected?
Yes. The original blueprints were based on the building permit that she got, which didn't address or we were not aware of, 3 dot 11, that supplemental ordinance. And our setbacks from the actual rear of the lakefront are 69. Our lot is very odd. We lose 20 feet from the north to the south. And so the setback on the one from the seawall is 69 feet, well over the 45? Feet, whatever the setback is, 40 or 45, I think it's 40 feet. The setback on the back, so we're 69, and then 89 on the other. So the home itself is set far off the water in terms of rear setbacks. The proposed home. It's the supplemental setback that creates a hiccup.
Okay. We got a lot to, you guys have a seat for a second?
Let me ask him a couple of real quick questions.
Yeah.
Do you want to open up public comment first?
Okay, I'm sorry. Hang on a minute. Okay, that's fine.
Just to get everything before we.
No, no, that's fine.
Yeah, it looks like there's a couple of people. Okay, I'm gonna open up public comment in regard to this Anchor Bay case. Anyone want to come up and speak? Come on up, gentlemen. Gotta go in front of the mic. State your name and address, please.
I'm Ernie Hassan, 8334 Anchor Bay Drive. I don't know these people, and like they said, when they said 27 feet, I got a little upset. You know, everybody, you know. But that isn't what I'm worried about. What I'm worried about is crossing the line to the water. First of all, I bought 30 years ago, everybody knows, over 30 years. And it saved the marriage because it's a park setting. I worked a lot. We came out, you need some entertainment. That was my entertainment. I worked, the wife was there. Now, today, you're gonna put up a building across that line that my wife is in wheelchair paralyzed from the neck down. I have to put her out, and then I have to go do something else. Can I move her? Do I want her to see a wall? Or do I want her to see the lake like she has the last 30 years?
Which house are you in relation to this one?
Second, how, what, one?
Can you come and show me?
Two.
On this map, please.
Ernie?
Yes.
Can I come up and show you the paper?
Yeah. I mean, they got a, they got a professional drawing here, so I just wanted to see if he's one of the neighbors.
You know, I'm just trying.
Probably six or seven homes.
Right here. Which one, is it any of these? All right, hang on a second. 91. You're on the microphone. Don't tell everybody. All right, so where are you at, sir?
I'm Hassan, H-A-S-S-A-N, and I'm over here. And my sister, Smith.
All right, so the, the view.
Burke is my sister. She's next to me.
Nice, nice. So this is the house in question?
Yes.
Yeah, so you'll be safe, okay? Just to show you, you know, the, the house isn't gonna go closer to the road at all, so you'll be okay. But you just pointed to the, to the road.
I don't.
Yeah. Right. Right, right.
I want the water where we walk out of the back and going to the lake. That's where I put her. Not at the road. We can build anything we want to the road.
You're down river, though, right?
Yeah, you, you, yeah, your view. Yeah, your, your view will.
You're down river.
Won't be affected on this one.
Yeah, the lake, down river.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the, thank, I'm gonna keep this. I'm sure you're gonna come up, okay. Oh, are you done, sir?
Yes.
Okay. All right, you're good. Thank you.
They're this way?
Next.
More toward the bay.
Mike Rubel, 8322 Anchor Bay Drive. Excuse me. If you notice how the road curves, and instead of using the two houses that the ordinance is based off of, they're going beyond that. If they went even further beyond that, they could build the house all the way up to the waterline. And really blocked the view. So what point of reference do they use? Now, they're using houses further away versus using the two houses that the ordinance is based off of that are next to them. They're about even with the one, or even a little past the one on the north side, and like they said, 16 feet already beyond the one on the south side.
Which house are you?
8322 Anchor Bay Drive. Last name's Rubel, W-R-U-B-E-L. It's on, you have a blue sheet here. I'm just worried about the setting of the residence.
Rubel right here.
Is that 8322?
Okay. So you are for it or against it?
I'm against it.
Okay, thank you.
Because like I said, the sense of presence is now if you look at the house that's on the other side of them, they're gonna be able to go match up with them and beyond the other people, beyond the other people.
Because it's the court. Yep, I get you.
And so, because like I said, it's just the township, you know, it affects the whole township, not just Anchor Bay Drive. So once you start setting the residence, you know, and everybody's gonna start, you know, moving farther and farther as far as they can, so.
That's why we made this ordinance.
Right, exactly. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
I'm lot 93. 8338 Anchor Bay Drive, John Cornish.
So you.
No, you're not lot 93. You're 83.
Okay.
Which one? You got three of them in here. Here's the house that we're talking about, so I want this house.
This is mine.
That's where you live?
And he's already three foot past me.
Just three feet? So it's 16 past, okay. Perfect. Okay, I just found out. Yep, thank you. Yeah, can you, can you state your full name and address one more time?
John Cornish, 8338 Anchor Bay Drive.
Okay, John, thank you.
Okay, so the house that's right next door, I intend on tearing it down and building my own final house.
And that's to your?
I live in the house furthest to the north, next to Ernie.
Yep.
And I'm gonna sell that house and build on my vacant lot, and my house I'm gonna tear down, which is right next to them. My vision was to go as close to the road as I possibly could to give myself the biggest backyard possible. If they're allowed to go out 11 feet, which they're already three feet past me, that puts them 14 feet beyond where I'm at now. Instead of going towards the road, I'm gonna end up moving my house towards the lake, just so I can maintain the view. Right now, I can see deckers. I can see munchies. And if they build this wall, that's my beef, so I'm against it.
Thank you.
Jerry Rubel, 8322 Anchor Bay Drive. We built a house for my mom. I got occupancy in the year 2000. One of the things here at the ZBA, because you can't build on Anchor Bay Drive without a variance, one issue they brought up was lot coverage. And again, I'm looking, I'm wondering how that goes into play here. I did prepare those maps and I provided you with information on the square footage of the house as well on these subsequent pages. And again, you know, we want to keep our view. We've, so many of us have been here. We, I've been there since 1962. My husband's grandparents built in 1940. You know, we want to keep the pristine, the nature, the lake. This is, we're so proud of where we live, and we don't want to see a precedence where we're gonna have these big buildings encroaching on the water. Another concern I have is that if their plan is approved, I know the original plan, from what I saw, included a covered porch, I believe it was called, on the bayside. Well, if they are approved, can they add that at a later time? Try to sneak it in? I don't know that that's the right word, but.
Not sneaking anything around here.
Well, not by me. So again, you know, just the, the precedence and keeping the nature where we live.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so, yes, I am against it.
Figured that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Markowski. I'm at 8314 Anchor Bay Drive. I'm admittedly beyond the range of the letters that you sent out. My primary focus is, my concern is the precedent that it would set going forward if this variance were to be approved, allowing a build closer to the lake. As people, it, once this is approved, I guess even from reading some of your prior meeting agendas, I, sometimes things get approved because those precedents have been set. And so I would be concerned that going forward, this would set a precedent as people want to add on to existing homes or build something new that they will continually encroach on our waterfront view. My family has been there since the 1930s, and everyone always respected their neighbor's view of the beautiful bay that we have. And I would like to see that continue, so I, I oppose approving the variance.
Thank you.
My name is Lois Smith, and I'm at, I'm sorry.
You can pull it down. Thank you.
Well, my name is Lois Smith, and I'm at 8335 Anchor Bay Drive. What I have to tell you, I've been an administrative law judge at LARA for 45 years. I don't have a lot of extra time. I work 50 to 70 hours a week. And the thing is, about 10 years ago, we went to the Breakers Hotel in Florida. And at the Breakers, you know that what the Breakers are, are rocks, okay? Right next door to the Breakers is the Estee Lauder home. And Estee Lauder, the Breakers Hotel in Palm Beach, wanted a, a, a seawall. She says, no, you're not gonna have a seawall because that's nature, and you're gonna have the sea. I don't care. Well, she had the sea for many years. And we happened to get down there at the time when they had a terrible flood, and they had to put a seawall in. Well, where did they get the people from? But up here. My brother, Ernie, right there, Ernie is over there talking to these guys from our area, you know, and everybody is talking about our area. Look at our land is sacred to nature. That lake, Lake St. Clair, is the most wonderful place in the world. If you look at the sunsets, if you look at the water, imagine what Jacques Cousteau would say. My daddy loved, my daddy loved Lake Erie. We went to Point Pele all the time. Daddy wanted to buy on Lake Erie. And I said, Dad, I don't look, well, you know, I'm a lawyer. And Daddy, Daddy says, Lois, we're gonna buy on Lake St. Clair and, and park over at Lake Erie. I said, no, we're not, Daddy, because I'm afraid that what they're gonna do is take our land. We bought here, and we bought here to protect our land, to, please. I, I don't want our lake to cry. I don't want Lake St. Clair to become mortar and brick. If people want mortar and brick, go to a subdivision. Leave this alone. As the people that stood up here, I mean, I can tell you, my colleagues, I mean, my, you know, judges, I can give you names of people that you would know that love this and are so proud that I'm here. And so, it, it's awesome. You should hear them talk. Now, I tend to be very private, so I don't want anybody in my business, and so I don't bring them up here. I, I protect this for myself. Please think about what Lake St. Clair means, what the land next to St. Clair means. Don't put brick and mortar. You want a $5,000, $5,000 square feet place? Go to a subdivision. I mean, I know kids, two and three million dollar houses, no land. They don't want grass. They want 6,000 square feet and forget it. Well, that's not what we're about. It is our generation that has to protect this. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not crying. I got cement in my eye. Serious.
Greg Wolfski, I'm at 8362 Anchor Bay Drive. And to the left of me, there's a house, it's a three-story house, right? And they're like 10 feet past me, and they built a fence, too, so I can't even see to the left. On that side of my house is my dining room, and so it's a step down, so I sit lower. So I don't like that over there. But that was there when I moved in, like 23 years ago. And his house that he's, is on the right, I measured it off, and it's like, I thought it was like almost 20 feet past me. And I don't want them building out. I'm already feel like I'm in a tunnel, already looking out at the lake, so I oppose this.
Thank you. He's the house directly to the south of it. And anyone else wish to speak? Okay. Any letters? This is from 8360 Anchor Bay Drive. I oppose and disapprove of changing allowing the ordinance. Gary and Wolfski? It's gotta be Wolfski. W-O-L-K-S-K-I.
I know that name is on the list.
Yeah, it's on, that's the only reason I know. I'm trying not to, no, that's. Who is this? Greg or?
That was Bean.
You wrote a letter, too?
I wrote a letter, too. I wasn't sure if I was gonna get a letter tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Trying, I'm like, hang on a second, that's him. Is there any other letters in our packet?
It looks like two.
I don't have any code words that says there's letters.
No.
Cookie cutter.
You got another one?
Yeah, these are, it looks like. Did you guys write letters and then have people sign them?
Yep.
Okay.
There were four neighbors that signed. There was some support.
All right, so just read the letter once, and then I want, I want to know the last name and address.
Two of them are here. They're in the back.
They already spoke, or they did speak? They did not speak, okay. Please read it.
Okay.
I can't.
All right. So for the record, this is a letter written by Mr. Dino and Ms. Zorica.
That's fine.
Okay. And it is signed by Edmund and Betsy Mueller. It says, dear neighbor, we are Anchor Bay Drive homeowners and have been your neighbors since 2017. We have enjoyed, this is from you guys, correct?
Yep. Yep.
Okay. Is this something we should read into the record if it's just from them? And there's just a signature.
Yeah, read it.
Okay. All right. We are Anchor Bay Drive homeowners and have been your neighbors since 2017. We have enjoyed our cottage here for all these years and have decided to make this our permanent home and primary residence next year. We have plans to build a new house in the location of our current cottage and would like to make you aware of this change, which will start this summer. We have submitted our plans to the Clay Township Building Department and have met all of our, all of the setback requirements from the roadside and rear setbacks and will be in compliance for these setbacks. Our new home will extend a few more feet past where the current home is in the backyard, and we wanted to make you. And we wanted to make you aware of this change. We are asking if you would sign this letter acknowledging our plans to build and acknowledging that you are okay with this new build and changes. Please feel free to ask us any questions. My number is, I'm not going to give your number out. Kindly, Zorica and Dino. Dino, sorry. This was signed by Edmund and Betsy Mueller at 8375 Anchor Bay Drive. The same exact letter was signed by Matthew and Kristen Barnhart at 8378 Anchor Bay Drive. The same exact letter once again was signed by John and Melinda Adams at 8366 Anchor Bay Drive. And that is it.
So when you wrote this letter to these guys, you told them that you were in compliance with all of the setbacks?
Yeah, this was, when we found out about the violation, we never got an actual correspondence stating this is your, what you're in violation of.
Did you rewrite a letter to these guys?
We, we actually, as soon as we got that letter, we went and talked to all of them and said, hey, whoa, we are just as surprised as you are. The house is not just four feet, it's actually 11 feet. And we attempted to, I did actually tell Greg about it and my husband spoke to John and Sue Cornish about it. So we did update everybody that was immediately around us and said, yeah, oh, it's not four feet. It's actually 11 and a half feet and here's why. We absolutely went and talked to everybody. We're not here to like dupe anybody or make anybody upset. We love the area just as much as anybody else does. Building a new house doesn't make us bad people.
No, not at all. Without saying your names or anything, do you understand that she doesn't meet all the setbacks? And you still signed a letter? You're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's all I want.
Okay. So for clarification, the ordinance, because the person had said it's only the two homes beside you, yet the letter is sent to people that are within 300 feet?
What person, I mean, the only person that's going to tell you the ordinance is Gary, the building official. The neighbors are all great, you know what I mean?
So that's my question. Is the ordinance specific to the homes immediately next to me? Or because the letter gets sent out to people 300 feet this way, 300 feet that way? So, which is why the new plot shows a better representation of more than just two homes?
Perfect. I'll have that answer to you in, Gary, two seconds.
Okay.
When I call him back up, okay? Do you have anything else to add though? No? Okay. Gary? So that would have been my first question also. Where do you pull from for your straight line setback?
Okay, so per the ordinance, and I hope all of you have read it by now. It specifically says that the minimum yard setback shall be established by rendering a straight line between the adjacent principal structures. So those, the structures to either side are the ones that are most, you know, stand to lose the most or gain the most by this ordinance. So it has to do with, yes, those ones directly next door. Now, on one side of them, they do have one that sits back. And there's also a provision in the ordinance that says that it's, if it's more than 30 feet away from that rendered line, then, then we can skip that one. In reality, that one is only about 18 or 20 feet and I don't have that number scaled, but it's clearly less than 30. So that portion of it wouldn't even allow us to then start to go out. It does allow for an averaging to be done between perhaps the structure next to that one and this one that sits back 18 or 20 feet. But yeah, we can go down the road because then that can change the dynamics of the whole thing. Now, what I've found over time, just being in Clay Township for a few years now, is that most of the time, and even on Anchor Bay Drive, most of the time, people self-policed it. They didn't want to get out farther than an adjacent property. They wanted to get everyone the same kind of view. This ordinance was written specifically for situations like this, where we do have in an R1 district, a 40-foot setback. And, you know, when we're talking about portable waterways, which is why this was created, to give yourself that open view, is that 40 foot, if a new guy could come in, put it 40 foot away, and they would be within the ordinance. And houses that were built prior to this ordinance that was established in 2019, I'd say majority of them self-policed. But there was also, you know, where you could be 40 feet. And some people would say, well, I'm going to be 45 feet or 50 feet, even though the other houses may have been 60 feet or more away. Just as poor examples, I guess. But the whole idea is to render an ordinance that will lessen the impact of a new build to the adjacent properties.
Do we know if we did that straight line from the neighbor, last name? And the neighbor, the other neighbor is not here, is he? You are, that's right. So, do we know that number? I mean, and then I just want to clarify because I'm seeing, can you come up here and show me one thing? I like the drawing. Where are you pulling your numbers from? Is it, not, I know not this house, but would it be this or would it be this corner?
Well, whatever is closest to the water.
Okay, so whatever is closest to the water. Yeah, 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 because it's curved.
This might be the closer.
Understand. All right.
So you take it from this point?
That and that. Yep.
To that point there.
Closest to the water. You guys understand that?
But there would be some allowances to average these two if you wanted to and come somewhere middle.
Understand.
But yes, generally it's from here.
So there, all right. Do we, and we don't have that.
Excuse me. Can I see that?
Hang on. I can't hear you. Let me look up in one second, okay?
Can I just say one thing? Do you take into consideration where our current houses, like, the house is already in?
Once you tear it down, it doesn't matter. So that, that doesn't matter.
So that's not even taken into consideration?
Once you, if you tear it down, it doesn't come into play. Your, the new ordinance has come into play. So that, that doesn't hit me at all. All right, so this is what this, I'm sorry whoever was speaking, I'll get to you in one second. See, I'm sorry, I'll get you in a second. So this is what, from the closest.
adjacent house.
That gentleman to this, okay? That's where, the green is the new proposed house. If they tear their house down, it doesn't matter where their existing house is. It doesn't matter. It's a vacant lot at this point, okay? So that's where that, according to this, needs to be. I do hate this straight line thing, but in the same token, it does work in this instance for sure. But they also have a curve, you know, they are at that point in the curve. So, you know, this gentleman is setback pretty far, you know what I mean? But I don't see anywhere where that is even close to what this ordinance. I don't even know where your architect came up with some of these lines, but see that? This is what Gary's saying.
Yeah, I was confused with that.
I don't see where your architect even attempted to do this ordinance.
Were they pulling from two houses away?
Three houses down, but it's still.
Two homes to the left. Two homes to the left on their south end.
I get you, but I don't.
So it's just, it's just two homes. Which Gary, when we spoke, I thought you had said you were going to consider the homes, two homes down, which was left.
Even if we went to this one, you guys.
No, actually you had said, can we go to? And I said, no, we got to stay.
Let me just read this. I don't know, Greg said you were going to go this way because you agreed this, the house next to us was such an outlier and set so far back and actually four feet closer to the.
All right, you guys, hang on, we need a microphone. If you guys are, you know, we got to put it on record. So if we went to, who's the neighbor to your, to your left? Down river? Or to your south? To the north? South, to the south?
Uh, I don't know, Larry, Ed and Betsy or Betsy.
Ed and Betsy Mueller.
Mueller, so there are four. All right, so if we went from their corner of their house.
Their lot 94.
To this gentleman's house, okay? That's exactly where your existing house is right now. Exactly where your existing house is right now.
Say that again?
If we went from.
Neighbor of his.
We got rid of, I'm sorry, what is your name, Greg?
Greg.
We got rid of his house.
Yep.
And we went to the neighbor's house.
Yep.
Not the closest, you know what I mean, or the closest to the water. I'm just going the closest to Greg's house that we deleted.
Okay.
And went from his corner to Mr.
Cornish.
Cornish's corner, his existing house.
Yep.
Your house is exactly perfectly right in line with that.
Our current house.
Your current house.
Correct.
So how did we think that we're going to go on an additional pass that?
We did not know anything about this ordinance.
Okay, so.
We didn't know anything about 3 dot 111 until we submitted for the building permit and then this came about.
Understand. So.
But your architect used the patio.
Yeah.
Yeah, the patio was gone.
No, the patio on that house to draw the line.
Right, yeah.
No, patio was past that.
So Gary, do you think that?
The patio was past the back of the house. This is.
Do you think that they did that and last, you know, got rid of Greg's house? Because his is setback a little bit and if he tore that down, you know, he would most likely go up as far as he maybe could. Do you think when this house was built, what year was your house built? Do you know?
1984.
84?
Can, can I just say something? If somebody was to tear down Greg's house right now, his setback from the road to his garage, it's not conforming right there because he's probably, he's four feet past us.
To the road.
So when somebody builds a house there, they're going to be going back. I mean, you may have to look at all these variables.
Understand. That's why I deleted his house in general. But I'm still not deleting because he's not, I'm not forcing him to tear it down.
100%.
And all I'm doing is drawing correct lines here.
So if we move the house forward four feet to be in line with Greg and the Mueller's and the other people, is that acceptable if we move it closer to the road?
But your blue line is referencing a patio, not the house.
Yeah.
No, the blue line is on the corner, the south corner of our house.
Not your house, the house next to it.
No, it's actually in line with 8338, two homes down. Because we went two homes to the left and two homes to the right. And if you look at that GEA, that house is even further out.
Yeah, I don't know why.
Would be in line with that house. How is that adjacent? That's not adjacent, that's not what the ordinance. When people look at, that's where the Cornishes live. The house right next to us is a rental that's been vacant for two years. Nobody lives at that house.
I say.
That's their house, but it's a rental and nobody lives there for two years. Their primary residence is.
Yeah, that doesn't, that changes every day. I'm not worried about the people. There's a vacant lot down there too that is going to get built on. A house is going to be tore down. We still got to make sure that everyone's in a straight line. Or within reason to be a straight line. I'm sorry that Greg's house is setback a little bit further. It is, it is hardship for you. But I'm not going to vote for anything past the existing house right now. I'll tell you that right now. Nothing will, that's, that's even lenient because we need, we need to, you know, it, it's a shame. They do have a unique situation. They, they are on that curve where the point comes. But they can still meet the straight line setback and, and be, if they got to shrink that house up a little bit, then they got to shrink that house up a little bit.
Can I see the line that you drew?
Anchor Bay, I mean.
I'm getting confused with the text of the statute.
We don't want to turn on the St. John's Drive job though either.
So that's the straight line.
Straight line, so according to the ordinance, from this line, which is Greg's house, okay? From, from here to that corner, that's, that's the allowable, where they would look. This is a shadow, that's their existing house. The green is their proposed new house.
Yeah.
So if I deleted Greg's house, because it's, even though it's not 30 feet back, where we would typically delete you anyways, if we deleted Greg's house and went to.
Mueller.
Mueller's house, that corner, to the corner of that gentleman's house, it's exactly where their existing house is. Exactly.
But how the, how the ordinance is written, it's these two houses that are supposed to, that's how you guys draw the lines?
Yep, draw it. He draws it from here to, that's that.
But it's an out, that house is an outlier. It's that so, it's so far back relative to every other house.
We have excursion or exclusions to that ordinance and it's not 30 feet back.
Okay.
Okay?
But it's significant relative to every other home there.
It's only 18 feet.
Right.
So that means anybody else would then, we have to come back and then, so then everybody's pushed back.
Yep. To a straight line. Or, or it comes down to.
He has to be in line with us, which will then be even further back in line with Greg's house, is what you're saying.
Unfortunately, he.
He has to come back also.
Well, if this 8338 is accurate, you own that one too, right? And that's the one you're going to tear down? So it would go from your house to, to 8338, which is now, it appears that it's going closer to the water, but that's just because the, the land arcs where you are. And again, that's a hardship. I get it. So that it appear that his new house, if he built, would be in front of your house.
So how is that okay?
Because it's a straight line. Okay? Do you want to see it? I'll show it to you right now.
I got you.
Because it's going to happen.
Okay.
Okay.
But so you're going to force us to go all the way back? Not from our, where we currently are, we're going to receive 16 feet back to be in line with Greg? We're not forcing anything.
No. We, we haven't said anything. We, we're not, we didn't make any motion or any proposal or anything yet, right? But I can tell you right now, I don't agree with your new envelope.
That's right.
Not because of them.
That's right.
This ordinance is written for a reason and this is exact, this is perfect. I do take in consideration, I do like your, I don't want to say it. Like you're at the worst because the water comes to your property.
It is 18 feet from that to the other.
Correct. You do, so that's why I deleted Greg's house, just to draw, just to draw a straight line. And by doing that, is exactly where your house is currently, okay? So if you didn't tear your house down and you left one wall built, that's where your house would be. Do you know what I mean?
Yep.
That's the furthest that I believe that you should be able to go. And that's even further than, I'm not doing the math, but it's probably six feet where it shouldn't be right now. Like your current house isn't, you know what I mean?
Yeah, the current house is not conforming. The current house is not conforming. It's, it's, but it's within the setbacks, but it's itself is, none of the homes are non-conforming. If you go further down a lot, none of them are even within the 40-foot setback of the water.
Right, but that's where the straight line comes into play too. Right. I get you. I totally get that. So I'm going to try to throw this out there, that I say if we make a motion that we delete Greg's house for a little bit and go off of Mueller's house, which is exactly where their existing house is, I'll show you this blueprint. And then it's kind of a little wiggle room right there. I mean, Gary, I don't know, is that, I mean, it's already existing. That way, if Greg ever did or sell or demo his house, he would have to move up and it would give him enough room to move up, if that makes sense. You're not losing any view to what you have now, but you're, you're able to move up. And when, you're going to have to come in front of the CP again when you build yours if you're going to come up any further than that. But I'm not worried about your house because that demo.
So Gary, when we spoke, we did address the front of the house.
All right, you guys, you see this, Chris?
Yeah, I see it.
So this is, this is what the ordinance says, okay? This is what I'm, I'm saying that is, you know, what they have existing, okay? It's up to you guys.
But if you left.
This is the green, this is what they want to go.
If you left a wall, then you don't even need a variance on for that, right? So we don't even have to grant anything if they leave a wall.
If they leave a wall, but if they're going to tear it down and if they tear down more than 50%, they got to bring it up to code. So it's, you know what I mean? So if you guys make an ordinance, I, you know, in this way, if Greg ever tears his house down, he would be able to then move up to this point. You know what I mean? Okay?
Yep, okay.
If you guys, you see what you're writing?
I agree.
You got it?
Yeah.
Sam, you got it? Sam, you got it? You understand that?
Yeah.
And that's making them, you know, kinda, kinda letting them get away with a little bit more than the ordinance, but still not something that's outrageous.
Couple of questions.
Sure, sure, sure. All right, we're back, guys. Can you step up for, we have a couple of questions for you? And then go ahead. If you ask something for us, you say it.
No, she's probably gonna propose it, but go ahead. If you have questions, go ahead and ask them.
I've got just a couple of quick questions. The square footage of the existing house.
Eleven seventy.
Yeah.
And the proposed square footage, if you add all your variances you wanted, what would that score?
Three thousand.
Three thousand. Is just a two of you there?
It's a two-story. No, we have two kids.
Two kids.
There's a bonus room above the garage that's.
So three thousand square feet.
Yep.
And what, if you, if you had to keep it, if you made the change, if, if you didn't get the variances, if you didn't get the variance for the rear, approximately, how large a home could you construct or would you, do you feel?
Uh, it would probably still be the same. We would just change the garage.
Do you mean your lot, lot, what's your lot percentages?
Uh, I forget. Yeah.
Cause that was a question for, you know, I thought it was twenty-nine percent.
Yeah.
You know, Gary, do we have a lot percentages?
Lot percentage, just talking about the.
On proposed.
Big water side, it's about twenty-nine point seven percent.
And we're allowed up to thirty?
We're, yeah, we're right there on that.
But so that would delete any future porches or any, you know, anything to where they would, you know, trying to answer questions that you guys proposed during your statements, right? Covered porches would, would probably put them over a square foot, you know, which would be in, in a variance. Size of the house, or Chris, I mean, where are you going with that?
Well, if, if you couldn't get your, your rear variance, what would be the square footage of the home that you could build?
It would probably still be the same. We would just have to change the garage.
So you're not gonna, you're not gonna change anything in your square footage, whether you get the variance or not?
Correct. It would be modifying the garage.
It's just that you wanna go back. You could still get the same house. It's just the shape would be different.
We have to change the garage. It would be forward facing versus a side entry, so.
But you could still get all your living space, so you could get everything you wanted without even getting this variance.
We haven't, we haven't explored that with the architect, but.
Approximately, I'm not.
Chris, I know where you're going with that. Before you answer though, before, you know, i- if we did make them come back, I don't see where they're gonna build that same house, because then, then they.
No, we wouldn't, because if we have to keep a wall.
The, the road setbacks, you know, you know what I mean? So they probably have to tweak it a little bit, take the other square foot.
But you could still get the same house.
Living space, yeah.
Living space out of it and be.
I don't think so. If we have to keep this, what wall has to be kept? You said you have to keep a wall, so like a garage wall can stay?
That's up to Gary. I can't, I'm not, yeah.
No, they can't stay in the wall. That makes no difference here.
Yeah, once you change fifty percent, you gotta bring it all up to code?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is this patio part of this plan?
No, we were gonna remove that. It's on there, but it will not be going up, because there's a roof and that will, that will block. So that's not gonna go up.
Gotcha.
Just for discussion purposes, I'm not seeing not self-created and seeing substantial justice. I see practical difficulty. I see unique situation, but I don't see those two.
So substantial justice, we've, there have been other people that have built on the road that have been way far, like almost thirty feet further up on Anchor Bay Drive. Um, we know of homes on Colony, on Harson's Island that have been granted variances. Um, so to us, that is substantial justice, because other homeowners have been allowed the property rights that we wanna be. And that's happened on Anchor Bay Drive. There was a home probably in two thousand nineteen that went up. Um, that was, I don't know, maybe twenty feet in front of the house next to it. Similar to our situation.
I think when you look at the property rights similar to those properties in the vicinity, they're talking about those property rights right next to you and then.
I think it has to do with the township though. It's not just immediate. The, the substantial justice is to residents of all of the township, not just.
Not necessarily. Um, it, substantial justice grants property rights similar to those properties in the vicinity in the same zoning district. So that's the same vicinity, but.
So Colony is not the same vicinity? Like Colony Road, Colony Drive, Flamingo, none of those?
Yeah, Anchor Bay's got a lot of, uh,
It's very unique. It's very unique.
You know what I mean? A lot of, a lot of stuff on Anchor Bay Drive is, is.
The thing is, is we're, our setbacks, I, I understand what you're trying to do is keep the, everybody in line. We, our setbacks are.
From the lake.
From the lake. We're, we're not gonna feed on anybody's view besides Greg really. To be a hundred percent honest. I mean, Greg is already so fact-backed that I, I mean, there's nothing, I can't do anything with him. I'm sorry.
If you look at the Google map, the Google map has a black line that shows the other homes and.
If you, if, do you mind if I come up there?
Sure.
If, if, if they're gonna build next to me, right? And, and they're gonna push it over here, I don't see how any, I'm gonna block anybody's view. I mean, if, I, I took a camera and, and just took a picture. I, I don't see where I'm gonna block.
See, see these lines right here?
I got you. A hundred percent.
Did you just say that you were gonna block Greg's view?
We already do. We're already sixteen feet in front of him.
Right, but, but, but when I drew this line, right, this is the ordinance. This is what your ordinance. Your existing house doesn't even meet the ordinance. So I, 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 and this is why I can't stand this, is because we do have that road house that's setback, but that's why this ordinance is made, is to protect that gentleman or lady or whoever.
If we moved this up four feet to meet Greg this way, does that block us out? Cause if we can shift the house up.
You're still so far out of whack. You're, you're, you'll be so far off from the neighbor's house to that house. You're, anything besides your existing house would not be, I, I don't see any justification for it. None. Like you couldn't tell me one rule why, why you need to go that. And that's deleting Greg's house.
I can't go forward, cause then I don't need this setback.
But you could shrink your house, cause it's not built yet.
I mean, I, I mean, I could, I guess, but.
Right, but.
But you're on a street that has much smaller.
I know, but that's what I'm saying.
I got a non-conforming lot. It's fifty feet wide.
But you're on a much, you've got, you're trying to build a much larger house and it's typical for the street.
I mean, I don't even care about the square foot. As long as you're on or that thirty percent, I don't care what you build. That, that's not, that's, it's just you and your architect that's gotta go within the setbacks.
Okay.
And, and that, that's kinda like the first meeting that the architect should have.
Well, it's not in the building envelope.
It wasn't in the, the, this ordinance, three dot one one was not in the, we had no idea.
It's a weird, I, I agree. It's, it's a different ordinance, but it's, it's here for a reason. I mean, look at everybody is.
We just weren't aware of it. We had no idea until we got a call. They said, hey, you gotta go for variance, so.
Oh, no, no, you guys are doing great. I'm not saying, there's no argument. It's just a matter of, I personally think that you can.
To the, where it is, is that acceptable?
Pardon me?
If we put the new house to where the current house is, is that acceptable?
That's gonna be something that we're gonna talk about in two seconds here.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
All right, so, anyone else wish to speak in public, open? Anyone? All letters have been read, I believe. I'm gonna close public comment. All right, now it's deliberation on it, to where you guys, I won't, I'm not gonna tell you to do whatever you wanna do, but I, I, I don't think they should go anything further than what their existing house is. And that, that helps Greg out for future build, plus he doesn't lose any more sight than he's losing right now. The next residence is, you know, not losing it or gaining anymore either. You know, even when he builds his house, regardless, he's still gonna have to come back a little bit, it looks like. Depending on where he builds in that lot. Eight, three, eight, three, three, eight, that's where it starts winging out. And that's where their unique situation is, is they come together at a point. And a lot of these people, they might not be blocking their view with their house, because they can look across, you know, not even see their house. But their immediate neighbors are definitely gonna be affected by, if we allow the, the green envelope.
Yeah, I think my biggest issue, I do agree that the lot is not great. Um, there's definitely practical difficulty in a unique situation, but I don't think that we meet that fourth factor of substantial justice, because it would block Greg's view, it'd block other people's view. And unfortunately, a variance should not do that. It has to protect all property owners and the similar circumstances, similar vicinity may protect you guys one day, so.
I mean, and I do believe they'll still be able to get whatever square foot they want and, and meet setbacks. They might have to redesign, but that's not our, that's not our, our issue.
They can still get this house in there.
They can get a ten thousand square foot house.
It's not, it's not, it's got itself created. They just wanna have.
Correct.
So they can still have a house with a similar square footage, I would suspect. I don't have that documentation in front of me. And they're creating the issue of trying to push that house back.
I don't think we are creating, the, the setback itself creates the issue.
No, it's a house that you wanna push into the setback that causes.
It's an ordinance. It's an ordinance that's coming into play. I get you.
The ordinance is the ordinance. We're not here to change the ordinance.
I get you.
But that creates the problem. Otherwise, we meet all of the setbacks by the law.
See, we're here just to, not to change the ordinance, but to come up with a reason that maybe this house fell through a, an error within the ordinance, because it can't cover every scenario, not to rewrite the ordinance.
I mean, they all seem to have a pretty decent lot towards the, towards the water. It's just they're, I, I think we're, I think we're bending by deleting Greg's house and doing that straight line, that's a hundred percent, to where no further forward than their existing house. I don't care how big their house is, as long as they are under this thirty percent.
Do we really wanna do that now or just deny it and come back? They need to. Cause we, we really, we don't really, we don't really know how many, uh, that number is. We, we, as we say, deleting Greg's house, but is that six or it's not eleven, we know that, it's not, uh, what is that house right now?
But we know where their existing house is.
Yeah, we know the existing house, but we don't know the number.
So if they come back and they want one foot next month.
Then we'll know.
Then we'll know, have an accurate drawing and know exactly where we're going. At this point, we don't know. We've got lines on.
We're just, the, the variances for eleven foot. And I agree.
I don't even know where the variance is eleven foot. I don't know where that is even coming.
Yeah, I know, I don't either. I mean, now that we went through this, it was never from Gary or anything.
Yeah, I'm not.
It was, you know. It's seventeen in the paperwork, I think it was or something, but.
We don't have accurate numbers.
I don't, I don't think we need, we should approve any numbers. We should just.
We gave you guys a bunch of drawings in the beginning.
We should just make a motion to deny the request for the eleven foot or the, let me get the numbers out here.
Twenty-seven feet.
The twenty-seven feet variance that's published in the Baker. Make a motion to deny the variance of, as stated in the document that was put in the paper. Variance is denied. Twenty-seven feet variance is.
So hang, hang on. Let me just throw this out there, you guys, before we vote on it. I'm not, not gonna pull your motion, okay? If we say you can go to existing house, okay, right now, they, they could start building. They'll, they'll come up with a plan and start building, right? If you say denied, right? And they say, well, we wanna go to the existing building, they're gonna be right back here. Because it doesn't meet that envelope. It doesn't meet that. So that's all I'm saying. Gary, do you understand what I've just said?
If that drawing's how we drew the paper though, right?
Gary, come on up here one second, please.
He was going the closest on this point.
But you know, I'm trying to avoid them coming back for a one-foot variance.
Yeah, I know.
Do you, yeah, right. Do you, do you think that these are accurate drawn? I mean, obviously it's.
Do I think that this is an accurate site?
Correct. Yeah, so this is the ordinance, how it reads from here to here. This is exactly what that ordinance is. This is the house, existing house, right here. I personally deleted Greg's house and went to this corner house, not the closest, this corner, and went straight across. And that, it appears to be to where their existing house is currently. So if we deny this motion as stated, right? And put no stipulations or no, hey, go to your existing house. If they say, well, I wanna go to my existing house, you're gonna deny it again, because it's not in this, correct?
Correct.
That's what I was getting at. So I'm trying to say, hey, you know what, give them a little bit, right here, give them to the existing. Do you agree with this, Gary? Or do you, like the hat, you know what I mean? Yeah, I mean, it looks like they're even.
Because these were pretty much lined up, and if I look down the street, it is pretty much lined up.
Well, when this one, when this one comes though, you know what I mean? When this guy, just saying, this guy, you know what I mean, it's gonna come on a major angle. You know, you know what I mean? Yes. Yeah, if he tears down, cause he's got the.
Then we go from this one.
To that, right.
So.
Would the motion be approved to that house or denied to that house?
So you would deny the, the proposed house envelope, but allow, if you want to, allow them to build up to the existing footprint? Or how do you wanna say that? Existing front yard setback? Existing house, that's it. If, that way they can say, whatever house they wanna build, press, they can, whatever, as long as it's not any further closer to the water than what their current house is. And that way they don't have to come in front of us to build, you know, a one thousand square foot house. It doesn't matter, you know what I mean?
Yeah, it's there.
Yeah.
Cause that, that's.
That makes a lot more sense than what you're saying.
It's a give and take.
Yeah.
I think we're giving a little bit more than we're taking away from them, to be honest with you. And Greg's view isn't gonna be any more hurt than it is.
Right now.
Right now.
Yep.
Is what I'm getting at.
I think you need to clarify, you're not deleting Greg's house.
I, I, I feel bad, Greg. I don't wanna just delete your house, but if, you know what I mean? The way the lines are.
What about the dimensions toward the property between us? That stays the same?
In other words, is the house gonna be closer?
It, it appears that the, the house, the new house would be closer to the property line than what it is currently.
By two feet.
Does that require a variance as well?
But that's not the variant.
It's so small, I, I don't know. I can't.
We're actually within those setbacks and there's room, extra room. We didn't go right to the side yard setbacks.
Yeah, those are.
Is there a way we can word this to where that's not a part of it?
What's not a part of it?
Is there a way that we can word this, whatever we're going to do, to say that the width of the home cannot be extended? No?
We can, two options. We can totally deny it and let them come up with something. Or.
Say that they can't go any closer.
Give them, you know, they still gotta meet the side yard setbacks. If they don't meet the side yard setbacks in the new house, they're coming in front of us again.
Right.
If they don't meet the road setback, they'll come in front of us. I'm just trying to say, hey, just slide your house back, whoa, not back, just put your house exactly where it is now. That's it. No closer to the water. You can go further back, but no closer to the water.
Is that the right way to say it?
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, how do, how do you put that in the?
I would say existing front, is that front? We call that front, right?
Use water side, because it's definitely the rear property.
Where, okay.
Water side.
I believe that's a good give and take with that unique situation of that curve. If it was, if it was a totally straight water, I could, it would be a totally different, but they hit the bend.
So it's still a variance to three. So it's still a variance to 311, it's just not as far, it's literally where their house is at?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you guys wanna put that stipulation in, or they're gonna have to come in front of us if they wanna build another house up to their existing.
Oh, existing's there.
I see that, I don't think they're gonna come in front of us to, to. No, I'm gonna. He still. Reset the motion. But I just wanted you to clarify that, hey. But that's up to you. We can always say no, and we can do a different motion too.
I think I'll, I'll re-clarify it, to deny the request for the 27 feet as stated in the, the proposed application, and keep the front waterside setback to, to existing house, as is today in its existing house. Waterside.
Waterside current.
Existing house line.
Does that make sense to you guys?
I think so. So.
Gary?
Where our current house is, is where the proposed house will be facing the lake, the lakefront waterside.
Gary, is that good? Makes sense?
It makes sense if you're gonna, yeah, you know, you're denying.
Denying the.
We're denying.
As presented, but allowing for the house to be built no closer to the water than the existing.
Closer to water.
Perfect. That's, that's what I was kinda getting at, to save them from going in front of us again. They still gotta meet all the setbacks, Greg. So the side yard setbacks.
There's a setback at the widths of the house, you know, just toward the bracket line.
As long as they meet the envelope of less than 30% lot coverage, plus within, you know, the, you know, five or 10, you know, on the, on the side yard setbacks. Anything bigger than that, they have to come in front of us again. I'm just kind of allowing them to, hey, you know what, stopping you from coming back, because you're gonna say, hey, we wanna come, you know.
If you move the house closer to the road to be aligned with Greg up front on the road.
As long as you meet the, the road setbacks, I don't care what you do up there.
Well, he's within the road setback. Like, he's in violation of the road setback, so if we come up to him, we would be in line with him.
That's a different variance.
That's a whole different.
That one is too, because what we're, according to what I drew, what we're deleting off of your current house, there's no way you'd be able to slide it back and, and, and be there. You're gonna have to, you know.
Yeah, we have to redo it.
Somewhat redo the house, I, I, or what I'm guessing.
Alright, just for clarification on how I've been handling the roadside setbacks. Cause if you look at Anchor Bay Drive, nobody's got the setbacks. There are some. But basically, what I look at is trying to line them up also with each other. So no one's blind spotting the neighbor. So it may not be the 25 foot as required by the ordinance, but there's not many properties on that that do meet that. So we would allow them to come closer to the road and line themselves up there with the adjacent properties, even though it's gonna be less than 25. So that's.
That will help you guys out in the redesign, to come up to Greg's, you know what I mean? Is what I'm getting at out of that, right?
No further in the back, like we'll be able to easily stay there.
No, no further in the back. And there's no, I, I would highly suggest, don't come in front of us for any side yard setbacks, variances. But it does, you know.
How about height now?
I don't know.
My goodness. Is it a boathouse?
Is it a boathouse? Do you want a fence right now, too? Might as well go for it all, get a fence. Does everyone understand that motion, or do we have to reread it?
I understand.
Well, we denied it, so.
We're still allowing a little bit of the variance. Do you want me to?
If I'm.
Okay.
She's got it all in her calendar now, right? I see her over here.
Motion to deny the variance as stated in the application. However, we will allow a variance up to the waterside rear setback.
Existing building line.
Existing building line, waterside. And the reasons for allowing this variance is that there is a practical difficulty. The lot is very shallow, narrow, the shape and area of this lot is very unique. This is a unique situation, because Colony Drive is generally a unique situation, oh, Anchor Bay Drive, excuse me. Anchor Bay Drive is usually a unique situation. These are special circumstances that are peculiar to the land, specifically this lot. With this particular variance, it is not self-created. Where the home sits right now, that is where it is already is, so this would not be creating a situation where this would existed regardless of ownership. This provides substantial justice, because this will not be harmful to the adjacent properties as previously stated. This is, this new home will be built only to the line where the waterside setback is, as as the existing home is. Sorry, it's late. This is not contrary to the ordinance, the home is already where it is, and there's not necessarily going to be any change. And this variance requested will actually afford the necessar, minimum necessary relief to the applicant. It's kinda drawn out.
Thanks.
Okay. He's writing every word, too. It's our new appointed secretary that we gotta vote in in a minute. Alright, we have a motion that kinda highlighted Joe's motion, so it's a double motion, same thing. So one of you guys that put the motion together can second it.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we overrode Joe's original motion, and we have a second out of them. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, so, little give and take there. Good luck.
You guys want those papers, or?
Um.
You can have them.
Nope, you can take just this one. All of the rest is in the works.
Do you guys want this one? Feel free.
Yeah, I mean, you can do the one a little bit.
So Gary, just, next time, before you get your final drawing, do your plot plan, do your house, do your plot plan, and then go to Gary. And then he'll see if you have any other ZBA or, you know, meet all the setbacks and stuff like that. You are gonna have to tweak it a little bit, but, you know, again, keep the peace with everything, you'll get it. You'll get it. I think everything will be real happy at this.
Yeah, we don't wanna make anybody mad, we have to live on the straight road. Thank you all very much.
Have a good one.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, no problem. Alright, so, any unfinished business? Remind me to sign these things.
Did we approve the May minutes?
Yeah, we did. Report from planning commission?
Yep, the main item was Elginak sand and gravel. We extend, we allowed them to extend their hours Monday through Friday from 7:00 to 6:00, and Saturday, 7:00 to 6:00, which allowed all operations, not just loading of trucks, allowed mining operations and maintenance to, to go, to continue during that time. Also allowed gravel trains to be allowed at the facility, and to review and repair required buring and fencing at 9032 field. That was the really only item on planning that.
So what was it, I mean, have we had a lot of complaints, and he wanted, he needed to work more, is that?
Well, he wanted gravel trains, for whatever reason, way back when, they, they didn't allow gravel trains. The way it was interpreted from his prior approval was, with the hours, he, he couldn't go and, if he, if he had the hours, he couldn't work on his equipment beyond that time, or do maintenance. Now they've allowed that.
Right. That's good.
So they allowed him, he didn't get everything he wanted, the neighbor got some relief, because there was damage to a berm area and things that was not shielding properly. So the neighbor got.
That'll be repaired, I'm guessing.
Repaired, yep. And so the neighbor seemed happy with it. He seemed okay with it. Always want more, but, you know, they seemed, seemed reasonable. It's a good asset to have in the area.
Yeah, definitely, definitely.
Just have to work out the details and make everyone as happy as possible.
Alright, any other matters to review? I think we have to nominate a secretary. Somebody nominate our secretary.
I would like to, can I nominate?
Yeah.
An alternate member, okay. I'd like to nominate Mr. Joe Bozzi as our secretary.
Alright.
All in favor?
Aye.
Look at that. Perfect secretary.
I didn't hear him accept it, though, did you want that? I didn't give him a chance.
Never told us.
Under the circumstances, we have some, some new board members, which I'm very thankful for. I love our old ones, unfortunately, we all, gets in the way a little bit. So public comments, Gary? I cleaned the house. Now that I'm late for dinner, um, close public comment.
And that's how it's done?
You get, no, you get to adjourn, you're the first one.
I adjourn. Is that the way I say it? Oh, I make a motion to adjourn.
Alright.
Suck it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys.